Okay, I do believe we can start now with the special session. So let me reintroduce all the speakers again. The special session on global peace building will be led by Excellency Yipan Kim Moon, the eight Secretary General of the United Nations. And joining him onstage are distinguished guests Miriam Coronel Ferreira, former senior mediation advisor to the United Nations, Robert Cior, the dean of the School of Public Policy at the University of Maryland, and Patrick Verkoyen, CEO of the Global Center on Adaptation and chancellor of the University of Nairobi. Dear Excellency Yipan, the floor is all yours.
Excellencies and ladies and gentlemen, it's a great honor for me to chair this very important meetings about what's the core relationship between peace building and sustainable development and human rights. These are very important topics. So in that regard, it's a great honor for me to moderate this session today. As I mentioned at the opening session, the world is now embroiled with a series of wars and conflicts. The illegal Russian invasion against Ukraine, bloody strife in the Middle East, Gaza, between Gaza and Israel, and particularly, more importantly, United States and Chinese rivalry conflicting relationship. Those are some very key concerns which we are now experiencing. You have already listened to many speakers, including myself, as well as a foreign minister and former Colombian minister, president, as well as ocean president. So they have all laid out their concerns, global concerns. I recall myself the most difficult moment during my time as a secretary general, when in 2008 and 2009, this Gazan crisis happened during that time. I had to rush to the region. And I termed it metaphorically that sort of conveyor belt diplomacy. I had to travel and meet at least four countries a day. That was, I think, a maximum, to meet as many leaders and travel to four countries in the region, in the Middle East. Then next day, I continued. So after that, with such a very hard work conveyor belt diplomacy, I was able to convince those parties in conflict. But this time, the United Nations' role has been shrinking and it has not been solved yet. They are still fighting. There is no agreement, even though some key Arab countries and United States and the European Union, they have been engaging in this. So those are all concerns which we have too. The situation is more perilous and role of the United Nations needs to be more strengthened. This is what I'm thinking at this time. On top of this, there's a lot of media reports and concerns surrounding the US presidential election. That's the United States, one country. But why then whole international community is paying attention? Who would be elected as president of the United States? That is something which is very sad. The United States has always been regarded as a leader country. Now there is more concern. So I'll try to listen the views from luminary speakers with whom I have been working together very closely at the United Nations. In that regard, today we need to discuss the problems of worsening security and lack of peace in the world and solutions to the problem. That's why we are sitting together as a first session, a special session. Here at this session, we have invited, as I said, luminaries scholars. From my left was Professor Miriam Coronel Ferreira of the Philippines. As you may know, she is the first woman in this world to sign as a chief negotiator of final peace accord with a non-state armed group. She led the negotiation with the Moro Islamic Liberation Front and was able to supervise the implementation of the 2014 Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro for two years. So I really appreciate your role. She has been also dispatched as a part of United Nations work to Iraq, Afghanistan, and Kosovo and more. For that, she received the Hillary Clinton Award for Peace and Ramon Maxasai Award. And most recently, this year, she was recognized by the Forbes Magazine as Forbes Magazine's 50 to 50. And that is 50 women, over 50 in Asia, who made their mark in their respective field. Let us give a warm welcome. Next to him is a very, very, I mean, passionate person, Dr. Patrick Verkoyen. He is now current CEO of the Global Center on Adaptation. That's an international organization which is based in Rotterdam, Netherlands. Happened to be, I'm working with him. I'm the co-chair of the Global Center on Adaptation. There are two ways in addressing climate change, mitigation and adaptation. So we are now focusing on adaptation. I have never seen such a passionate and hardworking person in my life. Of course, there are so many in the United Nations, but he is definitely one of the person who really works hard. It's better to listen to him when he says something. Now, another one, next to him is who is my very close colleague, longtime, ten-year colleague at the United Nations, Professor Robert Oh, who is now currently dean of Maryland University. Well, he is better known as, when it comes to him, as promoter, as a designer, designer. He was sort of a hip. There are some hip leaders in the parliament. He was trying to move all the countries in the world toward the Paris Climate Change Agreement. So I am very much happy to be able to have these two, Dr. Patrick Verkoyen and Dr. Robert Oh. Let's give them a big welcome to him. Now, I think I have some taken time. Now, I'd like to ask Professor Moro, what is your take after having engaged in many regional groups, ethnicities, etc., etc.? Then you have been, as I said, the first woman negotiator for peace. Then you must have got all frustrations sometimes, but achievements, some sense of achievement. But I think more, more, I think frustrated after such a long negotiation. At this time, what is your take? What can you tell us to the audience here based on your experiences then briefly?
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary General Ban. And Anong Seo, good morning to everyone. I'm not going to belabor the point about the two major international conflicts that we're facing now, but perhaps draw attention to the fact that after the Cold War, what we've actually seen is a preponderance of intra-state or domestic conflicts, most of which have something to do about the structuring of the very nation-state itself. The right to self-determination might be very much paramount on their agenda. And in the 1990s, we did see a lot of successful peace negotiations, but come the 21st century, unfortunately, we're really counting by our fingers just how many comprehensive agreements we have achieved and how many of them have been sustained. I am very pleased to find that, for example, in Asia, we do have a very good example, starting in 2004 in the case of Aceh in Indonesia and Nepal, which, and, but since then, Nepal in 2006, and since then, it was a long gap to go get to our agreement in 2014, the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro. Of course, you had the case of Sudan, very much after Nepal, but that unraveled very quickly with the difficulties achieved by South Sudan when it eventually gained independence and now the conflict in Sudan itself. Then, of course, we heard President Oscar Santos, a former president of Colombia, referring to their peace agreement in 2016. So we're really, really counting by the fingers those peace agreements that have been sustained significantly and more or less now into the difficult phase, equally difficult phase of peace building. As pointed out, implementing peace agreements are even more difficult than coming to an agreement itself. So it's still bad news out there generally, but at the same time, what we're seeing is a multiplicity of actors engaged in diplomacy. I think it was mentioned earlier that the UN has somehow lost its stature when it comes to actually directly mediating many of these conflicts. But of course, it's still there and it's still playing its own role through the different mechanisms that it has. But we are seeing now several new actors coming into the field, perhaps because they are more familiar or have connections or have alignments with some of the conflict parties. And that's a very good thing. If you see more and more states and even non-state actors coming into the field of mediation, trying all their best to do the back-channeling and shuttle diplomacy, they are very, very much needed at every stage of the conflict, even though it takes, even though it takes a long time. So there's good news and there is also bad news.
This may be, I don't know whether this is a proper question or not. You have been dealing with the tough guys, tough guys. Have you felt anything that, when as a woman negotiator with the tough guys, didn't you feel anything personally that you have not been respected enough? They have not listened to your some views? I know that you are a very strong-willed person, but that's right, since you were the first woman negotiator known as that, what was your feeling when you were dealing with really tough and bad guys?
Obviously, on the one hand, they tend to soften up when they're facing a woman, perhaps because they feel they have to be gentlemen. But at the same time, of course, when you get to the nitty-gritty of everything that has to be negotiated, when you start dealing with the hard stuff and you show to them that you actually know the stuff, what's on the table, what's behind it, the root causes, and the kinds of compromises that would have to be achieved then, then they get tough on you as well. Because any negotiation can really be tough. But what I think the best part is that when we come in, when women come in into a mediation process, what they're showing is that this is how a mediation process should look like. It shouldn't be a male-dominated thing. Men and women can solve a problem. Men and women have stake on the issues that are there. And there's no reason why it becomes, it is considered not so normal to have women inside the room or around the table. And that's the point that we're trying to make. It's normal. We are normalizing the presence of women in mediation by being there and showing that we can do the job.
Okay, thank you very much. We will continue our discussions. I'll move to far, far left, Dr. Robert Oh. I believe that upcoming US presidential election will have serious political and economic impact on, and global security issues, economic situation of the world. That is why not only Americans, but most of the countries, even in the European countries, they are concerned. Depending upon who becomes the next president of the United States, there may be a huge disruptive political or economic situations may happen. Many political scientists are concerned about the possibility of US isolationism. US isolationism and the My Country First Agenda either seriously hamper the existing order of alliance relationship between the United States and liberal democratic countries, NATO. And most importantly, most seriously, as I am one of the Korean citizens, Korean-American alliance relationship, how much it will affect? No, I'm not talking about any particular president, but there are only two presidential candidates. So you may understand what and whom I mean, because I don't want to be quoted. So maybe you may have your, as dean of political science.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary General. Let me just say what a pleasure it is to be back in Korea at this great global university. As you know, as a many-year official at the United Nations, whenever asked to talk about the politics of a member state, we are used to demurring or finding a diplomatic way to not answer the question. But this morning, in the lobby of the hotel, a businessman came up to me and he pointed at this color wheel on my lapel. And he said, "What's that?" And I said, "It's a symbol of the UN SDGs, the Sustainable Development Goals." He looked at me and he said, "What's that?" And I said, "It's the blueprint for the future of the world." And he said, "Oh, you don't think small, do you?" So we can't afford to think small at this conference or in this world today. So let me answer your question about the United States as a US citizen and as the dean of a school of public policy. These are not normal times, in the world or in the United States. This presidential election is more consequential, perhaps, than any election in the history of the United States. And it's that consequential because the worldviews of the two candidates for president could not be more different. Current President Biden has what I would call a traditional view of the world that both Republican and Democratic presidents have held for decades. And that is of the United States as a guarantor of a liberal economic international order, of a rules-based system in the world, of a multilateral way of solving conflicts in the world. President, former President Trump does not hold that worldview. His worldview is very transactional. It is focused on the United States not as a guarantor of an international system in any way, but rather as a competitor with every other nation on the planet. And that is hugely consequential, not just for the United States, but for every country in the world. The first, one of the first acts when President Trump was elected in 2017 was to withdraw from the Paris Agreement that you helped broker to address climate change. It was done, quite honestly, without any forethought. It was not terribly well-executed. The president simply declared, "We're no longer party to this global agreement." What followed that was significant. In the United States, the reaction of Republicans and Democrats was to rally around the Paris Agreement. And the agreement struck with all the nations of the world, businesses, governors, mayors, citizen groups, such that the United States did not fall significantly off its path on climate emission reduction, even though President Trump had withdrawn from the entire global regime. That same approach cannot be used on all issues. You mentioned Korea and security issues. Former President Trump's views of alliances are quite well-known. He doesn't value them. Alliances as guarantors of international security are something that he sees as constraining the United States. So these two worldviews are diametrically opposed and they're hugely consequential. The reason I'm speaking so bluntly about this here in Korea is that Koreans, anyone as citizen of, not of the United States, but of any other country, has a stake in this US presidential election. It is commonly said in the United States that democracy is on the ballot in 2024, and it is. But I would go so far as to say world order is also on the ballot in 2024 in the United States.
Well, thank you. I never met former President Trump myself. I think I also fortunate that I didn't have, I didn't need to work with him. It was a matter of 20 days, 20 days. I left the United Nations on December 31, 2016, and he became president January 20th, 2017. So it's a 20 days difference. But I had two times telephone call with him, telephone call with him as president-elect. And I was outgoing, but I was very angry personally when President Trump decided to withdraw from the Paris Climate Change Agreement. Soon after, just three or four months after his presidency, that was a terrible, terrible decision. That's why I became very critical about him. Then, while traveling around the world, I've been speaking about, you know, many different groups of people, particularly in Europe. Europeans are normally very calm. But whenever I was speaking about President Trump, there was a lot of applause, whatever I said. What I said, I'm repeating, the President Trump's decision to withdraw from Paris Climate Change Agreement was scientifically dead wrong and politically irresponsible. And his name will be, will remain in the history in a wrong sight. And then, I really enjoyed such a loud, you know, approach about what I talked. I hope that he did not listen to what I said. This is one, you know, one concern, you know, as far as I'm concerned. It's up to American citizens who to elect as their president. But in any way, as number one, most strongest, resourceful and powerful country in the world, we have to really care. We have to listen very carefully what is now going on. In any way, we will continue maybe because of time limit. Now, I'm going to ask Dr. Verkoyen. I think it's a tremendous opportunity that I can put you on the spot today with this panel on the important questions of peace building and also sustainable development goals, as well as this climate change. You have been really passionate in promoting the level of high investment on adaptation. We know that what need to do, we have to mitigate, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, etc., etc. But how to, you know, make sure that our whole economy and our system works by advocate and adaptation? You have issued this AAA, AAA, particularly on African, African adaptation acceleration program. So I really appreciate you are such a very passionate and driving force. I hope you will continue. And I'm very pleased to work with you together. Now, during your decade-long experience with the World Bank and now GCA, what kind of lessons, what kind of lessons you'd like to share with us, particularly many Korean, there are many diplomatic core members here. Share with them.
Well, first of all, Secretary General, you just asked Miriam how it is to work with tough, bad guys. But maybe I can answer the question, how it is to work with tough, good guys? Because to follow up on your story about President Trump when he came into office, I recall very well the joint op-ed you and I wrote in the New York Times front page one month after he was in office on what Trump could do on climate change if he were to follow the science and if he were to follow the economic arguments behind it. On your question, Secretary General, I have the pleasure to be appointed as the first non-African chancellor of the largest university in Africa. And in that capacity, I was in the last few days in Africa. So I would like to move the conversation, if you allow us, from the United States and Korea to Africa because these African leaders had a message for you, Secretary General, and they asked me to convey it to you. And in short, it is about three things: the good, the bad, and the ugly. And let me start with the bad. So these Africans leaders, from Ethiopia to Tanzania, from Nigeria to Senegal, to Comoros, who participated in that summer meeting in the last few days, they came with a very strong message on the interface between climate and conflict. And the headline is this: "Climate Change Is Stealing the Food of Africa's Table." Let me just repeat it for those here in the audience. Climate change is stealing the food of Africa's table. And although we're all living in the climate emergency, Africa in itself is ground zero. Think about it, Bob, I think you've said it many times before. Africa is the continent who did the least to contribute to the climate emergency. But nine out of 10 of the most climate-vulnerable nations, Secretary General, there are in Africa. Six out of those nine are at the same time conflict-affected. And the point is this: Africa's climate breakdown is exacerbated by the war in Ukraine. How so? The war in Ukraine has led to a food crisis, an energy crisis, a cost-of-living crisis, a debt crisis. I mean, Miriam, you referenced it briefly in your remarks. 60% of all low-income countries are currently debt-distressed. Half of them. Half of them are in Africa. And because of the war in Ukraine, where development finance from rich countries is being diverted away from critical causes, from development to climate change, fiscally constrained African nations, they're struggling. They're struggling to provide basic services from infrastructure to human health, education, but also food, energy, and water security. So message one from African leaders to this summit today is that the casualties of the Ukraine war are not just on the war zone in Ukraine, but they're also on the highlands in Ethiopia and on the islands in Comoros. The good thing is, there is a good story. And that story, sir, starts with you. Why? It is five years ago. For those of you who believe that there is a moment of retirement after being a Secretary General, not the case, because I think you even accelerated your conveyor belt diplomacy afterwards. Because you set up the largest global movement on adaptation. And adaptation, as we all know, is quite a technical concept. If you need, you need to explain your, your opinion. Every day in my day job as head of the Global Center on Adaptation, I need to explain what adaptation is. Well, adaptation, as you said five years ago, is about a smallholder farmer who is able to use drought-tolerant crops so that her fruits can grow even during times of drought. Adaptation is about a woman who takes her family out of harm's way when an incoming cyclone is coming in the coast of Bangladesh. And what you said, sir, five years ago, is true today. Climate adaptation, investing in climate adaptation is not only the right thing to do for the global South, including in, in Africa, but it is also the economic smart thing to do. Your message to Trump in 2019 was the world needs to invest 1.7 trillion dollars in climate adaptation, from early warning systems to climate-smart agriculture, to mangrove restoration, to drought-tolerant crops. And that's a lot of money. But the return on investment is 7.1 trillion dollars. So you said, sir, together with Bill Gates and Kristalina Georgieva, the current head of the IMF, it's the economics stupid to invest in adaptation because there is not just a climate dividend on investing in adaptation. There is also a peace dividend in investing in adaptation. Peace and conflict, Bob and Miriam, I hope you agree, they're two sides of the same coin. But now the ugly part of the story. We heard about the bad part. There is a good part. But the ugly part is that the rich world is not living up to its commitment. The rich world has promised in 2019 in Glasgow, or 2021 in Glasgow, to double adaptation finance. Well, what happened last year, partly because of Ukraine, adaptation finance supposedly goes up, well, actually, it's going down. So this peace and climate and development dividend, which we could reap from investing in climate adaptation, is lost. Two final points, Secretary General. Debt. Debt-constrained countries, particularly in the global South, are struggling. And in one of the remarks we heard on the videos, there is this call for the reform of the international financial architecture. There is a need for a reset of the Bretton Woods system, so to say. So I would hope that with your sort of clarion call, your megaphone to the world, there will be this debt restructuring for Africa. There will be this debt pause for, for Africa. Because I think Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Beowulf, she was right. When a natural disaster strikes in the global, in the global South, debt repayment needs to be paused. So in short, investing in adaptation is the only way to reboot our SDGs and to reset our Commonwealth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I completely agree with you. I have been speaking out to the people of the world that it's morally wrong and even politically wrong when African countries, who have contributed least to current climate circumstances now, then they are the ones who are being hit the hardest. And that's why you and I and other leaders have been working on how to help those African and small-island developing countries to adapt, adapt to this climate, climate situation. But at this time, most of the money, resources are being sucked into either Uruguay or now helping people in Gaza, Palestinians. So all these priorities are now being, have been shifted to political disaster. It's not almost a political disaster issue now. Therefore, we may have to work even harder to emphasize the importance. Of course, that's why I'm raising this issue, interrelationship between climate adaptation and other political issues. That's why I'm now very much critical against the political leaders now. Now, we have, I think, some, one more round. I think we will have about 20, 25 minutes more.
But can I respond to that particular point, Secretary General? If you allow me, Bob and Miriam. My country, the Netherlands, had recently elections. And what you currently see in Western Europe, what you also may see in, in the United States, there is this strong swing to the right. So during the last elections in the Netherlands, what was the number-one political agenda item? It wasn't climate change. It wasn't even the economy, if you may think. It was migration. Migration was the overarching driver for the electorate to choose left, right, or center. So the outcome of the elections is there is now this right, extreme right-wing party, who for 20 years were basically demonized in our sort of political system, became the strongest party. But my question to them was this: Where would you invest Dutch taxpayers' money? Is it at the border of Europe? Is it at housing refugees in the Netherlands itself? Or would it be much smarter to invest in the drivers of migration, which are included of, of climate change in Africa and other parts of the world? Because my proposition in this is this. I mean, Miriam, you spoke about internally displaced people as sort of the overarching driver of, of mobility. There will be this interregional migration as well, which will have vast repercussions for Europe and other parts of the world.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to return to Dr. Miriam. Your country, as I understand, you have been mostly dealing with some ethnic, ethnic negotiations now. But I understand that Philippine, I was in Philippines just 10 days ago. We had a meeting there. And I had a good meeting with the President Marcos Jr. and also President of Senate Juan Miguel Jugri, as well as a pro tempore President Lugardar. So I had a very good meeting with them. There, I realized that you, your people, your government are also very much a serious concern about what is known as the South China Sea issues. I realized that, again, the Filipinos, they call not South China Sea. It's West Philippine Sea. So West Philippine Sea. Now, recently, they have allowed, you have allowed the American bases there. As I understand, that the nearest point to Taiwan from the Philippines is just 93 miles away, 93 miles away, the Batanes Group. So that means Americans are now established their, their bases there. Now, what is, what do you feel about all this? You have been mainly dealing with all ethnicity issues, but now this is a political and security issue now. Are you ready to engage in sort of some negotiating harmoniously on this China-American issues now?
First, sir, Mr. Secretary General, I have to qualify that these are not American bases. I was an anti-US basis activist. We wanted the bases out, and we succeeded in doing that in 1992, when the Senate voted against the renewal of the Philippine-US military bases agreement. And our new constitution at the time, in 1987, does not allow foreign military bases on our soil. But the Senate was able to get around that with a visiting forces agreement, which is different from US military bases with extrajudicial, you know, with all of these powers, like their own laws within the US, within their own, within, inside the bases, not subject to criminal laws. All of these have been done away precisely because our 1987 constitution prohibits the establishment of any foreign base. A visiting forces agreement allows US troops to come into the country, has allowed their encampment within Philippine military bases, but does not, did not give them the same rights as that, as they had for the longest time under US-Philippine military bases agreement. So that's what we are, and we are indeed in a precarious situation. I think at the end of the day, what we're really banking on is international law, international law to be able to, to assert, assert our sovereignty and our rights over our economic zone. And this has been upheld by tribunal. And that's the real foundation on which we will be upholding our claims over what we are now calling the West Philippine Sea. As we know, how we label things are very important, how we project this. I mean, there are supposed to be historical basis for these rights. We say, for example, the so-called 7-dash-mile dash line, which is based on their, on the others' own map. But at the end of the day, we are standing pat on what international law, the law of the seas, provide for us, how that kind of, the freedom of navigation, that's very important for all of this. And perhaps come up with some mutually acceptable arrangement on some of the environmental protection, as well as potential economic activities that may happen based on appreciation of the sovereign rights of each, each country. So the presence of bases may be a deterrent, but it's not going to solve, it's not going, maybe it will provide some deterrence, but at the end of the day, we will have to rely on the global, global moral pressure to precisely respect the international law that we are, have been building for the last decades.
Thank you. Then naturally, I'll, I'll go to Robert Oh. Now, there was a very important meeting in China. What we know is Yanghui. This two-sessions meeting, two-sessions meeting between, this is a joint meeting between executive and parliament. Unlike in the past, there seems to be, have been a very important decision that the prime ministers, who is in charge of all this executive branch, his power has been almost scrapped and is in the hands of President Xi Jinping. Now, most serious US and China rivalry seems to come from, of course, they are competing to have a global, global power hegemony. But one directly concern issue, Taiwan, again, South China Sea. Now, I have noticed that many American parliamentarians, there are 435 lower house, House of Representatives, and 100 senators, they are competitively visiting Taiwan. This seems to have irritated and provoked a Chinese society. In that regard, even though I was not defending what Americans have been doing, I met, when I met last year the 40 minutes Wangi, I advise him not to pay too much to all this individual visit by parliamentarians. But when you react, overreact, when you overreact by sending airplanes and ships, naval ships to Taiwan, then that becomes a global news. And all these American parliamentarians, otherwise who would not receive any media attention, they, they receive global media attention. So competitively, they are going to Taiwan. So why don't you just disregard this kind of, you know, US has never said that Taiwan is an independence, independent state. United Nations and no country in the world, except the six or seven Latin American countries, they recognize Taiwan as an independent state. But otherwise, it's a part of China. Why you care, why you care so much about that? But at the same time, I think United States should also be ready to really maintain harmonious, mutually cooperative relationship with China. Otherwise, it will be affecting whole spectrums of global affairs. Korea is directly affected by this kind of bilateral relationship between the two countries. As a political scientist now, what would you advise the US Parliament and also White House on this?
I would love to advise them. The 21st century world order is going to be affected more by the United States and China and how they deal with each other than by any other single factor. It is the easiest thing in the world in Washington today to criticize China. The competition to criticize China is fierce. Everyone wants to outdo everyone else in terms of how tough they are on China. But the fact is, the world order depends not just on the views of Washington and a few other G7 capitals, but on the views of China. It is possible for the United States and China to cooperate. And we have seen this on one of the most difficult issues, which should naturally lead to hyper-competition between the US and China, climate change. The US and China are competing technologically, economically, politically, to try to become the drivers for the economic transition that is required to address climate change. And yet, the US and China have been consistently collaborating with each other since the Paris Agreement. And the brilliance of your facilitation of that negotiation was to give them space to play a leadership role involving all the nations of the world, but putting the responsibility on the G2, the so-called Group of Two, the US and China, to solve the problem that is of their making. So here, I think if the US and China can collaborate on climate change, which is a naturally competitive issue, especially when you look at the transition of the economies in those two and in all countries, it is possible for them to collaborate. I would say, sitting in Washington and teaching students every day about the world they're entering and what they need to think about, and I'm looking at all of these bright students here at Yonsei, do not assume that the United States and China have to not only compete have to not only compete, but have to have conflict. They do not have to have conflict. In fact, they cannot have conflict. No one wants to live in a world where the United States and China are going at each other hard. We know what that could look like. So I would say that in the context of this discussion of the SDGs and this pretty little color wheel, it is the roadmap for the future. The United States and China can collaborate on everything on this wheel. You gave them a platform for collaborating on this. You gave them a platform to collaborate on climate change. And guess what? They have. So I don't accept the premise that the United States and China are fated to have to fight each other. In fact, we've shown there is another way. Thank you.
Well, for one point you mentioned that you remember in 2015 COP10 in Copenhagen, China was just backtracking. They were not cooperating at all. That was a disaster in the history of negotiations now. At the same time, I really appreciated the highly President Xi Jinping's willingness to cooperate with the United States when it comes to climate issues. Without China's full support, President Obama and myself would not have been able to have this Paris Climate Change Agreement come into effect, come into effect, before I left the United Nations. In Hangzhou during, just before the G20 summit, I think both China and the US President submitted to me the certificate of ratification. So that has accounted, I think, 42%. 42% of global greenhouse emission. The requirement of Paris Climate Change Agreement to become effective was 55% of greenhouse gas emissions should be guaranteed by the countries. So two countries took 42%. And rest over 13% was very, very easy for me to do that. So in that regard, I really appreciated such a bilateral relationship, harmonious bilateral relationship. Now, after that, with the change of leadership in the United States, so I think the relationship became very much sour now. It's much more than sour. It's very dangerous for global peace and security and other development agenda, including climate issues now. Since we have a very few minutes, maybe I'll give floor, another floor, to Dr. Faircoin about the European, in general. There are some countries, illiberal democracies even in Europe, which really makes all the situations worse now. And there are a lot of changes of leadership in Europe. Then, how do you see the success of your GCA and adaptation project when all this Ukrainian issue is not resolved? And all these Europeans are paying more attention on now Middle East troubles now? All this takes away the political attention and or financial support. You will have some difficulty in adaptation effort.
Yes, so my sense is this. Europe is adrift. Not just in the Netherlands. Look at Italy. Look at what happened two weeks ago in Portugal. Look in Sweden. I think there is now this push to the right, which indeed will put sort of constraints on the overall development finance envelope. But what I tried to say before, and what African leaders, more importantly, said last week in Lagos in Nigeria, all these agendas, they are related. And I think it was quite, I mean, we just had a sort of a promising story about US-China relationship. What you also see now is a sort of a redesign of the relationship between Europe and Africa. Europe is trying to position itself now as sort of a global power amidst this geo-economic fragmentation. And I think it was Italy who hosted this very important Italy-Africa summit last month, which had climate change very central on the agenda, which had food security very central on the agenda. Why? Because Europe does realize that it is very much related and interdependent on the regions around us, which particularly were linked to Africa indeed.
Thank you very much for your contribution. As we have just a few minutes, I'd like to conclude. What I'd like to emphasize at this time, my message to political leaders, particularly, they should understand that while they're taking power, political power may be important, there are much more important and urgent issues that they have to work together. This is sort of, we need a global partnership. Global partnership among government, business communities, and civil society. Now, Yonsei University, I think this may belong to civil society now, academic society. So all these three hands, three pillars should go together. There is no country in this world, however powerful, however resourceful, one may be like the United States or European Union, but they cannot do it alone. We have to join all our hands on the deck together. That's what I have been emphasizing. The global partnership is the most important one. In that regard, academic institutions like Yonsei, you are bringing up all these future leaders. I think we should empower our future leaders. They should understand, I think there are many students here, you must understand that in just a few years, you will be in charge. You have to challenge. You have to challenge your leaders, political leaders particularly. When they are not doing well, I think you have the right to vote and you have the means to change your leadership. That's what I'm urging you. Be ready, you must be ready to be able to take your leadership. Your leadership will be very much important in just a few years' time. So be ready to take this kind of global leadership. But your leadership should not be focused only on domestic leadership. Your leadership should aim global leadership with a global vision. Then, only then, I'm sure that we'll be able to have a sustainable world for all. That's the main purpose of this trip, why we try to listen to all political leaders and business leaders. But now is your turn, your turn, dear students. Be ready to take charge and make this world much, much sustainable and happier and more peaceful. And we still have some moral responsibility. Until then, I will do my best. But I need your full support and full engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Secretary General Bang Kim-un, for moderating such a wonderful session, and all the panelists for taking part and sharing your insights and experiences on global peacemaking. It was definitely great to see the efforts from global leaders in exploring solutions to the current world situations. And I believe that these insightful discussions were made regarding how peacemaking, sorry, peacebuilding closely interconnects with the Sustainable Development Goals. It was a bit of lots of sensitive topics here, but I think it was definitely a very, very insightful session. And I especially thank Security General Bang Kim-un for his messages for our next-generation global leaders and our students.